Good afternoon. It is my pleasure, on behalf of this board, to welcome everyone present here tonight for this Pitt County Commissioners Meeting. I call this meeting to order. Let's have our roll call, please. All present, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Farley contacted the state and said he would not be able to attend tonight.
Do we have a motion to excuse?
For a second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, we will give everybody an opportunity to relieve yourself from sitting down. If you will stand for our indication and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you once again for the privilege of assembling together as a community. We thank you, Father, for each one that is here. We pray your blessings might be upon each home that is represented. God, direct this board this evening as we make the various decisions. We pray, Father, that we will make those decisions that are pleasing to you. And, Father, we know that if we make decisions pleasing to you, they will be what is best for the community that we represent. Now, Father, we also pray this evening for Tammy. We pray that you might just touch her and heal her body completely. Be with Scott and his family, bless them, encourage them, and strengthen them. These blessings, we pray, in your holy name. Amen.
Face flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there are no additions or corrections to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered. Tonight is rather special, and even more special now. Especially in that it will be my last meeting. But even more special in that I am honored by having my wife. And when I mention certain individuals, I'd like you to stand. My wife, Barbara, my firstborn child, Mark West, and his wife, Mary Beth, there's Michael, I don't believe the other...
He's not there.
Where is he? I can't see him. Michael, and he's the second birth, but two of them are six minutes apart. And his wife Denise. In addition to that, I have some grandchildren that are present. Will they stand?
Don't forget your daughter.
Huh?
Don't forget your daughter. You introduced me to your daughter.
Well, you know, it's not a game if you don't miss out sometimes. But the two boys would probably say this, that I saved her for last because she was the best. But Melissa, my daughter, who is a judge from... Stand up, Melissa. And her husband Glenn, son-in-law. Now, we get back to the grandchildren. Let's see, just... The first grandchild, West, and Glenn, and Rachel. Anybody else? But having said that, I did want to give special recognition to the inner part of your heart and soul. Now, y'all keep standing. Don't sit down, Mark West. Now, I want all of my friends that came from Farval, Fountain, Bell Arthur, Pitt County, wherever you're from, please stand.
All the rest of them don't get up.
I got one more special recognition I wanted to say, and that is Dr. Avonaz, will you stand? Everybody knows Dr. Avonaz, but he has... And Bynum satisfied. Bynum, raise your hand. Any other members of the hospital board present? Stand up, please. I can't see.
No. It's Noel.
Noel, wait a minute, Noel. These three individuals, along with the whole pack, so to speak, have brought so much to this county. In their dedication and their work, it makes us a holy place to live. And I want to say that thank you for you three, which I might have had something to do with you being on the board, but be there as it is. Thank you, and I appreciate you immensely. Now, have I missed anybody else that I shouldn't have? Okay, having said that, Mr. Manager, our first order of business is the... Before I say that, though, all of the special friends and family. I know Melissa, her family came from Chapel Hill. Anytime you feel that you're inclined to want to leave, and I know there's one in this pack that will leave early, but he'll probably leave a little earlier, too. But feel free, really, to get up and leave, because what we're doing here might be boring to you. But we don't want to overlook anything, and we want to do a good job at what we're trying to do. But really, any friend or neighbors or whatever that came in totality, feel free to leave. It's your pleasure. And we love you and appreciate you being here. Now, Mr. Manager, back to you. The first order of business being public hearings.
Yes, sir. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight. The first, if Eric Gooby will come forward, is the Lever and Russell Real Estate LLC rezoning request. And Mr. Gooby will present that to you.
This is the first rezoning request for the first public hearing we have tonight. It's a rezoning by Lever and Russell Real Estate. The request is rezoned approximately 8.127 acres. It's located on the northern side of Frog Level Road. This is northwest of its intersection with US 13, Dickinson Avenue. The request is to go from rural residential to general commercial. You see the site here that's highlighted in yellow. You see it's located on the north side of Frog Level Road. It's just east of the Southwest Bypass right-of-way. You see, it's also in pretty close proximity to the city of Greenville. See here, the pink is the city limits, and the blue is the city's ETJ. Existing land uses in there is predominantly undeveloped, with also some commercial in close proximity, particularly in Oxford Park. And according to the new Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, the area is designated as industrial... For the land use plan, the industrial areas contain employment-generating industrial uses such as warehouses, light manufacturing, and multi-tenant flex spaces, and should be located in areas with highway access. The Southwest Bypass Plan also does include what we call a crosswalk table. And this describes where certain uses or certain zonings would be appropriate within these land use categories. So you see with the industrial here, it does show that general commercial is may appropriate, may be appropriate with compatible neighborhood and surrounding uses. And under the current county zoning, you see there is existing zoning in Oxford Park, as well as just to the west of the property on Frog Level Road. And if we toggle on the city zoning, you'll see also that the area around is predominantly also heavy commercial in the city's jurisdiction. And the general commercial district is primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the utilities to support such development. Our planning staff has reviewed it and finds that the request is consistent with the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, given the subject property's designation as industrial, as well as its proximity to existing commercially-zoned properties in Oxford Park along US 13, and also to the west on Frog Level Road. Staff also finds the request is reasonable and in the public interest. There's very limited residential development in the area, and the site is suited for commercial or light industrial development due to its proximity to the bypass in Oxford Park. The planning board reviewed this request on October 17th and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff also recommends approval of the request. And with that, Mr. Chair, we'd like to open the public hearing.
Having heard from the presentation here, I declare this public hearing open. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up for that?
Yes, we have one person, Ken Malpus, if he'll come forward to the podium.
Come around, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Ken Malpus, I'm representing Lever and Russell. There's only about four and a half acres of this that's actually usable because of the wetlands that's in the back. We don't anticipate any roads. We think there'll be two lots that'll be developed, real similar to what's in Oxford Park. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Not appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else, Mr. Manager? Do you have anybody else signed up?
Uh, no. Nobody else has signed up.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this issue? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. So ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Next, Mr. Gooby is going to present the Doris Wilkins' conditional use permit request.
Yes, sir. We have a second public hearing. This is for a conditional use permit for a residential child daycare center or child daycare. Again, this is a quasi-judicial procedure, so the board has to follow certain procedures. The purpose of the hearing is to establish the facts, not to gather opinions on the project. Witnesses must be under oath and cross-examination allowed. Testimony that's provided by the witnesses has to be supported by relevant competent material evidence. The board has to maintain a detailed record of its hearing. There should be no ex parte communication, and written findings of fact are required. Any reasons for disapproval must be provided in writing, and decisions are appealed to Superior Court. And we'd like to go ahead and swear on our witnesses tonight.
Yes, sir.
So anybody who's going to speak on this matter tonight, if you need to come forward to be sworn in.
The request is by Ms. Wilkins, who was just sworn in tonight. She's the applicant. The request is for a conditional use permit to modify the hours of operation for an existing residential daycare facility. It's located at 828 Bear's Construction Road. It's called a Bundle of Joy Childcare. The applicant proposes to modify the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. The use was previously permitted back in October of 2007. That allowed the operation from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. At that time, child daycares were a permitted use, but they had that time stipulation placed on them. In 2009, the ordinance was amended so that in-home daycares were a conditional use, and that allowed for longer hours of operation. So that made her existing daycare a non-conforming use. So any sort of modification, particularly to the hours of operation, require the conditional use permit to be issued. I see on the zoning map, the property is zoned rural residential. There is an existing general commercial site to the north at the intersection of Bear's Construction Road. That's where the Family Dollar store is. Comprehensive land use plan shows it as suburban residential. And then the existing land use is predominantly residential in the area there, except for the Family Dollar and some farmland immediately to the south of it. As per the zoning ordinance, there are certain development standards for residential daycares. These include security fencing, location requirements, and hours of operation. And the use being it's an existing daycare, she already is in compliance with her current requirements of the zoning ordinance. So the board must deny the permit if it concludes that the development as proposed, more probably than not, first will materially endanger the public health or safety. Planning staff does not feel that modifying the hours for the existing facility will endanger the public health or safety. If it will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties, again, it's existing. It's been in operation since 2007, so we don't believe it will injure any property values. The use will not be in harmony with the area in which it should be located. Again, it's in a residential structure, and it's an area that's predominantly residential, so we feel like it's consistent with the surrounding land uses. And finally, the site is in conformity with the land use plan. Staff feels that it is. So staff does recommend two motions. The first would be to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with all the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the second motion is recommended to approve the conditional use permit subject to the development standards of the zoning ordinance and the following additional condition, that the use shall operate only between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. With that, Mr. Chair, we'd like to open the public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Manager, do we have any sign in addition to what we've had?
Uh, no, sir. Nobody's signed up.
All right. I declare the public hearing closed. What's your pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm over, Mr. Board. I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, for those that do not normally attend these meetings, you might think that we've moved through these motions in an expeditious manner, which is accurate. But the agenda has been presented to each board member approximately a week prior to tonight. We've had time to read and go through and apprehend what we felt is for the best benefit of the people of this county. And that's the reason that these things have taken place for that. No further business on that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
All right. On your agenda next, we have four presentations for resolutions. Do we have a motion to approve those resolutions?
Don't move.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. So ordered. Mr. Held, it's in your hand.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if we can have you and the vice chairman come down to the front for the first presentation?
President, with the board in a effective and efficient manner, as Mr. Owens has, through his unselfish service, attentiveness, and devotion, exhibited concern for the overall improvement of quality of life for the citizens of Pitt County. As Mr. Owens played a significant leadership role in the late 1990s in the transfer of Pitt County Memorial Hospital from under direct county control to a nonprofit entity. The Biden Health Organization now serves Pitt County and 28 other counties in eastern North Carolina, employing 12,500, including 90 physician practices, and serving 1.4 million people. As Mr. Owens always served as a strong advocate for K-12 public education, exhibited by his involvement and support in such endeavors as the Education Compact between Pitt County Board of Education and the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. As Mr. Owens championed Pitt County's efforts and success in obtaining the quarter cent self-tax legislation that has been leveraged to construct and renovate K-12 and community college facilities. As Mr. Owens has been a strong advocate of EMS service in which he helped in the creation of Pitt County's EMS Service District and EMS Tax. Whereas Mr. Owens will long be remembered for his many contributions toward improving the well-being of Pitt County and its citizens. Whereas Mr. Owens has served as an integral part in the success and growth of Pitt County by serving on various boards and committees such as the ECU Board of Visitors, as an ex-official member, the Biden Medical Center Board of Trustees, the Biden Medical Center Joint Policy Review Committee, the Transportation Advisor Committee, Chamber of Commerce Development Commission, and the Shepherd Memorial Library. Whereas Mr. Owens has earned respect from citizens and colleagues for his superior work ethic and extreme wealth of knowledge. And, the last whereas, whereas during his years of service, Mr. Owens was involved in various projects such as renewing and expanding industry, implementation of courthouse expansion, renovation and renovation. In addition, the 700 megahertz radio and paging system implementation and subsequent expansion, the construction of a public health center, mental health center, detention center, as well as the overall growth and development of Pitt County. Now, therefore, great resolve that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby commend Mark W. Owens, Jr. for providing unselfish, stalwart, and able leadership and diligent service to the board and to the citizens of Pitt County during his tenure as a commissioner. Adopted this 19th day of November 2018. Signed by our chairman, Vice Chairman Glenn T. Webb, attested by our clerk, Kimberly W. Collins. Mr. Chairman, vice chair.
All right, next, our chairman, Mark W. Owens, is going to present to our outgoing vice chairman Glenn Webb a resolution. And Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read this one?
Please.
Office of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution Appreciation Honoring Glenn Webb as Vice Chairman. Whereas Glenn Webb has served faithfully and honorably as Vice Chairman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2017 to December 2018. Whereas Glenn Webb has provided the Board of Commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment as Vice Chairman. Whereas the Board of Commissioners expresses their appreciation to Glenn Webb for his guidance, organization, and leadership skills, and commitment to service during his tenure as Vice Chairman. Where Glenn Webb has, through his attentiveness and devotion, exhibited concern for the overall improvement of quality of life for the citizens of Pitt County. Whereas Glenn Webb has shown his dedication to the citizens of Pitt County by serving as the at-large past president of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for 2018. Whereas during his tenure as Vice Chairman, he's also been an integral part of the Pitt County government by serving on various boards and committees such as the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Community Advisor Committee, Shepherd Memorial Library Board, Board of Equalization and Review, and the Pitt County Firemen's Association. Whereas Glenn Webb served as Chairman of NACOS, the National Association of Counties Justice and Public Safety Committee. Now, therefore, great resolve, the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners commend Glenn Webb for his efficient leadership and outstanding service as Vice Chairman of the Board for the calendar year 2018. Again, adopted this 19th day of November. Signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens.
Junior, attested by our clerk, Kimberly W. Collins. All right, next, we can ask Commissioner Jimmy Garris to come forward.
Your D is not weak, boss manager. He runs 20 miles a day.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read this?
Please.
Office of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution Appreciation Honoring Jimmy Garris. Whereas Jimmy Garris has faithfully and honorably, as a Pitt County Commissioner, served from December 2018 to December 2018. Whereas Jimmy Garris served as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners in 2006 and 2013, and served as Vice Chairman in 2005 and 2012. Whereas Jimmy Garris has provided the Board of Commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment for 16 consecutive years. Whereas the Board of Commissioners expresses their appreciation of Jimmy Garris for his guidance, organization, and leadership skills, and commitment to service during his tenure as a Commissioner. And whereas Jimmy Garris, through his tenderness, attentiveness, and devotion, exhibited concern for the overall improvement of quality of life for the citizens of Pitt County. Whereas during his years of service, Jimmy Garris was involved in economic development projects for new and expanding industries, implementation of the 700 megahertz radio and paging system, implementation and system expansion, and with the overall growth and economic development of Pitt County. And whereas Jimmy Garris will long be remembered for his many contributions toward improving the well-being of Pitt County. Whereas Jimmy Garris will be remembered for his diligent preparation and understanding of matters coming before the Board. Whereas Jimmy Garris has been an integral part of the Pitt County government by serving on various boards and committees such as the Airport Authority, Development Commission, Transportation Advisor Committee, East Carolina Behavioral Health Advisory Board, EMS Oversight Committee, Chamber of Commerce, Convention and Visitors Authority, his liaison, and the Pitt County DSS Board. Now, therefore, great resolve, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby commend Jimmy Garris for providing stalwart, and able leadership, and diligent service to the Board and to the citizens of Pitt County during his tenure as a Commissioner. Again, adopted 19th day of November 2018. Signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr. Attested by our clerk, Kimberly W. Collins.
I can only, only Barbara and I can talk to him like that.
I think I'm gonna sit down if you let me.
Is that because I'm gonna be talking?
You talk so long, I'm gonna sit down.
That's right. I knew that's what you were gonna say. Um, I'm not gonna look at you. Um, the folks here from Farval and the Fountain area, and all around Bell Arthur, wherever else you were naming, many of you don't know that I'm your representative also. So if you need me, you can call on me. I'm gonna be here at least a few more years. Um, those of you who know me also from Farval know I don't have any notes, so you might settle down for a little bit. I won't be long. I can't be too long. Um, Mark was a good friend of my brother's at Farval High School, Red Devils.
I thought it was you.
Go Red Devils. Go shh. Far from us here. Billy's not, so I can use. Um, those of you who were Red Devils about that time back in the day know what an important role that area of Pitt County plays in the people who lived there and grew up there. And it's still going on. Mark was from Fountain. My mother was principal of Fountain School. And I went to Fountain School, some of you don't even know there was a Fountain School, through fifth grade. And Barbara, Mark, all the people that used to come over to Farval in, what, seventh grade, sixth grade? Anyway, it was kind of like a meshing, and I think the same atmosphere is there now. Mark has contributed, as an elected official, over 50 years to this county and to all the citizens that are here. There are not many people that can say that. Now, I know most of you know him personally, so you may not feel this way all the time. But he does have a heart of gold. And he is a person who will do anything for anybody who calls or comes to them and asks for help. Now, some of you, he charges if you go in his office. But when I came on the Commissioners, and I've been here over 20 years now, I can't believe that, seems like yesterday. But when you have leaders like Mark to bring you in and answer questions and never push you away, and he does it for everybody, not just people he knows, but anybody. He's gonna be sorely missed as a Commissioner, as a friend. And I'll have to say, Jimmy, you are too. I'm gonna throw that in there. But anyway, um, I have the pleasure, and you gotta stand up for this. And I know how much you love that right here. But all of these people didn't get up to leave because they're here because Pitt County is naming this auditorium the Mark W. Owens, Jr. Award of Excellence Auditorium. the Mark W. Owens Jr. Award of Excellence auditorium. And these folks here are ready for a party, and I think Barbara's got one planned for us. Is that right?
Yes, we have a reception, there's food in the back corner to my right, your left, and we'd have staff to hang back with our guests. Be served first, and then staff second.
Let me say something before that. Uh, I went through in the recognition, left out my daughter until the end. But I did mention grandchildren. I have three, Barbara and I, have three grandchildren that are present here tonight. We've got four others that are off in school and couldn't be here. But I just wanted everyone to know that we've got seven great-grandchildren. And, uh, okay, now I follow your instructions.
You've got seven grandchildren, and they are great.
We'll break for a reception and reconvene ten or fifteen minutes. Well, five minutes.
Yeah. He's a tough chairman.
Again, thank each of you for being here, and we hope that we've been enhanced, each of us individually, by having the communication that we've had with everyone present. And it's always good to have young people to come before this board. And we'd like it this time to recognize, through the manager, the young people that are present here tonight. If you will stand up, and Mr. Elliott, will you present these young people?
Yes, we have a group of Pitt County School students with us tonight, and I believe Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams would like to introduce who they are.
They are Student Members Association of Bethel School, and they're here with their advisor. We're happy to have you.
Stay, listen, feel free to do whatever makes you happy. Wait a minute, does any of y'all want to say anything?
You gotta lead them. You wanna say something?
That's very sweet. Thank you, darling.
That's good enough. He likes it short.
All right. Mr. Manager, do we have any one signed up to public address?
No, sir, nobody's signed up, unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward to address the Board of Commissioners.
All right, let's proceed then, and have our items for report.
Okay, Sam Kroom, we have our tax collection report for October two thousand and eighteen.
Good evening, Commissioners, it's good to be with you. Congratulations as well for those who are rotating off. The October two thousand and eighteen tax collection report. The Pitt County combined collection rate for real and personal property taxes for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen is sixty-five point eight-three percent. The combined collection rate one year ago on real and personal property was sixty-nine point four-two percent. The Tax Office continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary enforcement remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes.
If I can note, we do anticipate, we have one large taxpayer who's yet to pay this year. We believe the majority of the difference between those two percentages will be filled once that tax bill pays.
That's correct. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll move. I second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's ordered. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is the monthly financial report for our general fund as of October thirty-first. Brian Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for the month ending October thirty-first. Uh, we're at our four-month period for the year. Uh, our revenues are exceeding at forty-one percent, and our expenses are at thirty-one percent. We are exactly where we should be for this time of year.
Any questions? Motion to approve, second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's ordered. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Manager.
Next, my report is manager. First item is to announce your meeting date, only one date for the month of December. As you recall, we have combined the first and third Monday into the second Monday of December. That'll be Monday, December tenth, and that'll be a six p.m. meeting. Item B is just to remind the Board that the NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Legislative Goals Conference is coming up. That'll be held in Wake County, and that'll be January tenth and eleventh. And if you're interested in attending, let the clerk know, and we'll make arrangements for your registration. The last item is regarding the Integren Corporate Park. The Development Commission Committee One Hundred is working with a potential client that would like to locate in the corporate park, and they're needing, requesting a reduction in the speed limit. Right now it's forty-five miles per hour, and like it to be reduced to thirty-five miles per hour. We will, if the Board is good with that, we will send a letter to DOT just indicating the county's desire to do that. Ms. Yuhas has surveyed via email the tenants in the corporate park to see if they would have any heartburn with this or any concerns, and there was none expressed. So if the Board is fine with that, we will send a letter to DOT making the request. They'll, they have to go through an analysis as to how it's justified. It's kinda like when you asked for County Home Road to be reduced from fifty-five miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour. They ran an entire analysis, and I think they reduced it to, from fifty-five to fifty. So this'll be the same type of process.
Do we have consensus for that?
Yes.
All right, next.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a motion for the consensus?
Second.
All in favor, indicate, but raise your right hand. It's ordered. All right, under item eleven, first item, Mr. Manager.
We have PJ Andrews is gonna come forward and present information regarding the Little Contignia, Contignia Creek debris removal project. Rebid, reissued, re, whatever you wanna call it. PJ will explain.
We received, uh, bullets to clean out the debris of the perp in Matthew. We had it posted on Friday, September ninth. Um, the previous contract we selected was a purchase contract, and however important it is, it may be important to start this process. He may not have the required, uh, wire to do this job. So we terminated him, uh, said we finished the whole process again. Through that process, this is the stretch of the creek we're talking about. It's rocks and grits, and it runs all the way down Highway nine oh three, it's called the bridge. Approximately thirteen miles. Um, and as you know, since that's happened, we have had a number of perp in Matthew. So there, uh, believe it or not, there is some debris, there is now, however, there is some debris that was there and it's gone, so it's kind of a different type of thing. We're in a good situation considering we're not going very far, so we should be able to carry that.
PJ, I think it's important to note that no funds were paid or expended to the first contractor who became and breached the contract.
Uh, here's the pictures of the project. Some areas are completely flooded, some are also flooded, more enhanced flood. Um, these are grant funds, like I said, I mean, they do not have to be repaid. This last go-around, it's every night, it's up to the question of, is the load a little bit better?
You say you did some work starting down at Grifton, coming up, and that's by the first person, the first group. How, the plans for this contract extends it up to what point?
It goes all the way to Martin. We've broken it down into four segments, just being long as one. We're basically, we're sorry.
You answered what I wanted to know, you said it went to Farmville. All right, okay. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I want to, I want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In that, in Matthew, my area flooded as well, and we need to start addressing all the flooding sections. When we started looking at and writing grants for this kind of thing, that we should include all areas in Pitt County and not just a portion of it or a certain district. My area floods a lot, and water is standing from last week's rain. So we are, we would, I would like to see us, as a county, be a little more sensitive about the total county and what happens with water and drainage and the need thereof.
Thank you, Mary. That point's well taken, and I appreciate you saying it. Is there any further discussion on the motions? Not all in favor, indicate, but raise your right hand. It's ordered. Thank you, sir. Next.
Next, your presentation regarding...
Could you, I'm just confirming who made the motion in second for me?
Yes, all right. Who made the motion?
So moved.
No, somebody else made it, while it's...
I didn't hear it.
She interrupted me, all right. Now, somebody make a motion right through.
So moved.
Made in second. Let's vote again. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next.
Okay, next is a presentation by Wanda Yuhas regarding the North Carolina East Alliance and Pitt County's membership in the alliance. And also we have John Chafee here, who's the executive director of the alliance, who'd like to, I think, address the board after Ms. Yuhas gets finished.
First of all, I do want to say that the Development Commission Board's and staff are very committed to regional projects and regionalism. Our concern is to more, a particular innovation. Some people are probably aware that we have been partnering with Wilson County, Johnson County, and Natchez County for the Lava Park Express. That was launched a couple months ago, and we're already getting very good results. So we do have a strong need for it. The way Development Commission Board approached this was that the notion of reviewing our membership in the alliance was introduced in our senior board meeting. The board then had a month to let the staff know of the questions that they wanted answered and were avoiding concerns at all, and that then we took that up at our next meeting. I believe all of you have the documentation that Development Commission Board viewed in this process. Our chief concerns and the reason that the board made the decision to not continue with this. And I believe you're all aware that up until now, we have, the county has not had to write much yet, but it was paid by funds that we already have in the alliance. In January, we would have to begin actually paying from our budget.
Now, the Development Commission did, in our budget, include funds, but with the direction from the Commissioners that at this point in time, we would review our membership and decide whether or not to expend those dollars. The chief concerns of the board was that the future mission of the alliance is unclear, that we will, of course, have to begin writing checks. Uh, our annual fee would be fifty-three thousand dollars. Because of the work that is currently going on with the city of Greenville, with the Committee of One Hundred, and with all of our municipalities, we don't know what our financial demands for economic development may be in-house. Our geographic cohesion is gone. The map that I just shared with you shows the number of counties that were members of the alliance and who were some of our closest allies, who are now involved in the Southeast Alliance or with the Triangle. So our geography is not there. We were also very concerned because some of NCEA's own board members indicated that they felt that the alliance was a sinking ship. Those are not the words of the Development Commission or any of our board members. That came from alliance board members. In my conversations with John Chafee, and all of you know that he and I have a very long professional relationship and a great deal of mutual professional respect for each other. When I spoke with John about what our cohesion is, he indicated STEM East. The issue we have there, although we are, again, very supportive of STEM education, is that with the work that the Development Commission is partnering on with the Pitt Greenville Chamber of Commerce to have students from our public schools actually visit various industries, we are getting better feedback there, and in turn, our public school system has indicated that they will respond to the feedback from that. And the final concern is that a number of employees have left NCEA. There has been no move to replace those employees. Their executive director or president/CEO is going to be leaving in a few months. As we know here close to home, I'm going to be leaving in April. We've already begun work on a succession plan, on the future program of work, and preparing for that. And we have not seen that from the alliance. The vote by the Development Commission Board was unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am. In light of the material that you have in your agenda, and what has been said here tonight regarding the extensive discussion that's going on with the Pitt County Development Commission, and what the commission itself felt was needed in this situation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, uh, let me say, Mr. Chairman, as your representative on that board, as Wanda has indicated, we took that extremely seriously. We had a very lengthy discussion on this issue, and we unanimously concluded that it was time to withdraw. So I would like to make that motion.
All right, Mr. Chafee, how about you stepping up a minute after long years of longevity? Can you give us a brief explanation? I believe someone said you wanted to explain.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do, 'cause I think I've contributed to some misinterpretation, I guess I'd say, in terms of the situation. So I'll, I guess I'll start with, is the, is like Mark Twain once said, in terms of, my demise has been greatly exaggerated. I think it is for the NCEA's alliance as well. So we've, I know we faced that in a conversion in two thousand and fourteen. It reared its head again in two thousand and seventeen, and yet we're still here. Our finances are in good shape in terms of moving forward, and I'll explain a little bit as we go. But I do take some of the responsibility for some of the information. As you know, we serve twenty-eight counties, and our board has taken the attitude is that we serve twenty-eight counties in eastern North Carolina, roughly one point four million people. It's essentially the similar footprint as Vidant Health and the service area that ECU chooses to serve. And those two entities are among our top, top two investors. And they will continue to be among our top investors moving forward. Many of your largest employers are investors in the alliance as well. In addition to Vidant and ECU, Heistre Yale, Patheon, Thermo Fisher, BB&amp;T, Main Pharma, plus others like Duke Energy Electricities, Dominion Power, the EMCs, and others. We continue to add to our group of investors as we basically go out and make our case. And we know we basically had to manage that transition in terms of what are showing our performance and what we had accomplished, and then taking that to investors and saying, this is what we said we'd do, this is what we've done, and we'd ask for your support. Those entities basically support us because they value our value, our proposition, marketing and lead generation, as well as our actions that have increased capacity in this region, including Pitt County. I recently learned, Wanda was kind enough to share with me a little bit ago in terms of the decision by the Development Commission Board, which I admit was a bit surprising. But again, I understand because of some of the information that was shared with you that has changed. I'll put it that way. So I'm not retiring anytime soon. I shared with my board is that I had a desire to be able to step back. I was eligible in terms of being able to retire in the spring. But at the request of several, I've, they've asked in terms of for me to continue as we manage a transition. Some of the assumptions that we made, I made, prove not to be accurate in terms of how that transition would take place. So I've committed to them, and I'll stay and continue to work for the alliance. Number two is we've recently hired a young man named Joseph Goodson III. You may know him, he's a Pitt County resident, he was born and raised here. He just recently graduated from ECU with a BSBA from the College of Business with a... He just recently graduated from ECU with a BSBA, from the College of Business, with a concentration in international business, with a minor in German, and he's a great addition to our staff. We're using him as a research and marketing assistant, and he's done good work. We've taken him to trade shows, face-to-face meetings with clients, and basically working in terms of supporting our team with research, which is critical for it. Our mission has not changed. We continue to still be committed to growing the economy of eastern North Carolina by increasing its capacity, attracting new companies that hamper in addressing issues collaboratively, like workforce, which is the number one element of most companies when they're considering a new location, is can you provide the talent not just today, but into the future? And that's why we dedicated ourselves to workforce development, poured a considerable amount of money into that in the past, and have been working in terms of a STEM initiative in collaboration with 12 school districts across eastern North Carolina, of which Pitt has been and remains one. I believe we add value to the Pitt County effort in a number of different ways. I believe we can add stability to your efforts as the county and the city continue to move through the discussions that you're currently having about how do you form an economic development partnership in combination with one another? I know those conversations are ongoing, and they'll probably remain that way for a while. I think we have the ability to be actually a stable, continuous force in terms of delivering economic development services. Part of that's through marketing, part of that's through lead generation, bringing clients to eastern North Carolina. If I'm not mistaken, I think you've had five new announcements over the course of the last almost five years since 2014. Some of those have been basically startup companies, a couple of those have been recruitments, and essentially, we've contributed one-third of that. So, one of the companies we worked with located in Fountain, North Carolina, was a lead that we generated coming out of Select USA and brought to eastern North Carolina. They settled on Farble, they wanted to be within a radius of Greenville, North Carolina. They said, "Look within 50-mile radius and find us a building that'll fit our requirements." That ended up being in Fountain. We have brought several other projects to visit Pitt County, and we roughly have 40 active projects today. We try to basically extend our reach to hit and touch about 100 companies a year, and then narrow that down through attrition, or actually through vetting to see, are they capable of doing what they say they're going to do, and are they seriously interested in eastern North Carolina? But company recruitment is really not the only measure, as Wanda's probably told you on several occasions. It's not the only measure of success in economic development. We invested heavily in a group called IMF East, that has invested over a million dollars in early-stage companies in eastern North Carolina. Many of those are based in Pitt County. In fact, some of those are spin-outs from East Carolina University. Our expectation is they will add jobs and continue to invest in Greenville, Pitt County, in this region over the years to come. Some are basically at that point of basically cashing out, is the term, and as a 16% owner, if you will, of IMF East, that'll generate a pretty handsome return on investment for us and a cash infusion to the NC East Alliance. We have brought, Wanda mentioned STEM East. So, we've brought statewide and national acclaim to eastern North Carolina, specifically to Greenville and Pitt County, since our headquarters is here. Through a collaborative approach to improve educational outcomes involving, as we mentioned, 12 school districts, area employers, the NC Center for Science, Math, and Technology, the Smithsonian, and others, to expand career exploration, bridge the gap between educators and employers, and boost success in science and math, especially among minority students. And that's been basically verified by the Friday Institute at NC State University. So, we're having an impact on what is considered to be the number-one site-location consideration. It's a capacity issue for eastern North Carolina, and we've been addressing it for six or seven years. As a result of that, we've been invited to make presentations, sometimes in collaborations with others, at workforce development and STEM conferences around the country, California, Louisiana, Washington DC, as well as several times in the state of North Carolina. We've advocated for and obtained commitments for many things that will improve opportunities for Pitt County and its neighbors, its industries and its institutions, for years to come. Some of those include the designation of Interstate 87. We were the catalyst in terms of taking advantage of the opportunity that presented itself with the FAST Act, and gathered together a group of people basically along that corridor to identify that as the interstate corridor to connect Raleigh and Norfolk. That'll pay dividends for us going forward. Part of the rationale for why Eaton Corporation, which is now Heister-Yale, located in Greenville, was because it was equidistant between the ports of Norfolk and Wilmington. So, they could basically, if you want to say, play one off the other, looking in terms of which one gave them advantage at any point in time. That locational advantage is simply going to get better with the advent of Interstate 87. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline, that'll bring a new source of energy to eastern North Carolina that's been actually an inhibitor in many of our communities in terms of the availability of natural gas. And then one other is the Connect NC Bonds, is being an outright advocate and going out, spreading the word about the importance of that as it was to eastern North Carolina, making it relevant to people in this specific region. So, I really want to say thank you for your support, staying with us in terms of that early year, in 2013, 2014 was important to us. I would say important to us in terms of that Pitt remain in the alliance going forward. I would really respectively request that if you would defer action that's been proposed, allow us to go back and meet with the Pitt County Development Commission Board in light of some of the substantive differences in terms of information that what they considered at the time, as I'd say, is a different circumstance today, and we'd like to have that opportunity, have that conversation. I'll be more than happy to respond to any questions that you have. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chafee. We've had a motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? We've had two presentations. What's the pleasure to both of you?
Let me ask Mr. Chafee one question, John. The information, because what you are saying is that the information the Development Commission made a decision on was erroneous information.
That's correct.
Now, did that information, was it erroneous at the time, or has this new information been revealed since our meeting?
That's a combination, Mr. Garrus. So, I don't know exactly when the Development Commission Board made its decision. So, in one respect, I know it was out there, is that I was looking at retirement. So, it just depends upon when you looked at that and when the information that was shared. The other, in terms of not replacing staff, Joseph Goodson started with us as an intern in January, graduated in May, and he's been employed by the commission, I mean, by the alliance since he graduated in May, so beginning in terms of May or June of this year. And I, what was the third item I raised? It was different, so I don't remember. Oh, our mission. So, our mission hasn't changed. Our mission has always been as it is today, and that is, we identified three things, and that's basically to grow the economy of eastern North Carolina, and we do that in different ways. Capacity to building, as I mentioned, workforce development, STEM education, which addresses a very particular issue for eastern North Carolina and other places, and the other is marketing and lead generation, and we continue to do all three of those.
That answers your question, Mr. Garrus.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Yes. You listed a lot of positive things that were occurring. How many of those things would continue to occur if we didn't join your group?
Well, it's hard to say in terms of advocacy, because we don't know what's next on the agenda necessarily. We've identified some things, a new Brody School of Medicine, we've been asked to lend a voice to that, and some other things in terms of advocacy, and we'll take a look at those as they come. Lead generation, again, if you look at the fact, we can all do better. So, we've brought one client that the deal was closed in Pitt County, and that company located in Pitt County. I think there's more opportunity to be able to do that. So, I would venture out and look at, say, so, look at terms of the total budget of the Development Commission on marketing, advertising, what you do in terms of lead generation, and measure that against what you spend with us, and what results have been yielded to the Development Commission in that respect.
All right, what's the pleasure to both of you? Question for the man.
Excuse me.
Mr. Webb? I've just got a quick question. What we're doing with the Convergent study and the things that we're moving forward on, wouldn't all the things that we would be paying to be a part of here be covered by the new group?
Yes.
Well, technically, the proposed Pitt County Development Alliance, if that's what it's going to be called, is more of a focus on the Pitt County than a larger area such as the eastern region, the 28-county footprint that John Chafee's group covers. I think there is a vision to, if the alliance is successful, maybe to have it be bigger, but initially, it's to try to get the local entities within Pitt County together to create the public-private partnership for economic development.
Okay, thank you.
And the greater area of the metro area, I mean, you're white in that sense.
Yeah.
And certainly, I don't want us to become competitive. Most of the leagues that we are in are coming from the state. I think you made some inroads there that John taught me to work on a number of years ago, in that, as we have told our schools, our state representatives, now, if there's a life science project, we are concerned with it. We always get that request for information. So, we are in a different place with the state than we ever have been, and that's the situation.
Ms. Ward?
When this came about, it was not as large as it is now. When we all, when our county joined and became part of this, I don't think that us pulling out means that we don't think there's anything wrong with the group, and John knows how much I respect him, and way back when, he was in that seat for us and the county, and he's fought for Pitt County for many, many, many years. But I do feel like having gone to the new focus that Convergent is doing, as Glenn said, I think we're really on a path that's going to focus primarily on Pitt County and the smaller towns and the communities in the county as a whole, and Greenville area, the metropolitan area. So, I feel like with that as our focus now, that I think that's the direction we should continue in, and I do think it's going to grow and develop into what we need, and our Development Commission has done a yeoman's job. I've said that many, many times, and we just look around and see, so.
Ms. Ward, you're speaking in favor of the motion.
Yes, I am.
If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the motion, then we can go from there. All in favor of the motion, maybe Mr. Garrus, raise your right hand. All opposed? You got the count? All right, thank you. Next issue is the appointment of trustees to the Vida Medical Center. Mr. Ward, you want to speak today?
Yes. I would like to, we have three seats coming open, and I would like to move for the appointment of Dr. Terrari, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Williams. That's Diane Taylor and Bill Monk, not Mr. Williams, I'm sorry. And I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like for the board to be aware that we try to have an equal balance on the boards. My district is enough out of this, and with Vida, there are already six, District Six has two members, District Four has three, and District Five has four. My board, my district will not be represented on this board, and I'd like to offer that we accept the nomination of Mr. Tom Asbury and Mr. Ernest Lee. Because we are not represented in this, on this board in my district if we do this. At some point, we have to start making the equal balance.
Beth, your motion was for number one on our list, seat eight, and then the other two is different districts, is that correct?
Right.
Now, Mary, if you, just as chairman, if you want to make a motion, who you want who to run against, make it, and we'll vote.
Can I respond to what you said about the districts? As far as I know, on the hospital board, because it, the hospital board represents all of the Vidant hospitals that are out, not just in the county.
Twenty-nine.
Yes, and I've never, it's the first time that it's ever, I've ever heard a consideration of the district, you know, and we have other boards and other commissions that we try to make sure we have representatives from all throughout the county, from the districts, but this is not one of those. So, with that said, yes, sir, those three I put up, and then if she wants to put up those two, we'll have to vote on hers first.
I want to go with Mr. Tom Asbury. Thomas Asbury, is that his name? Thomas Asbell, I'm sorry. Thomas Asbell II from Bethel, and Mr. Ernest Lee as a rural person.
Evidently, these are slots, Mary, and I'm not trying to tell you what to say, but put a person against a certain slot that motion's already been made.
Oh, okay, all right.
And we'll vote on them.
All right.
Paul, attorney, help me out here.
I would like Mr. Tom Asbell as number two, that slot, seat thirteen, and Ernest Lee at seat, please, poof. Seat three.
Not the preface seat, I think, has to be seated by a medical doctor.
He didn't say it on here.
Yeah, there's the correction. Ask for a medical doctor.
So, pursuant to the letter, Mr. Chairman, I'm seeing that the seats that need to be filled are seats fifteen, sixteen, and eight, according to the materials in your package, and seat eight must be filled by a physician.
Did you get that, Mary?
Uh-uh.
Tell her again.
The seats to be filled on the Vidant Medical Center board are seats fifteen, sixteen, and eight. Seat eight must be filled by a physician.
Okay, I didn't recommend anything for seat eight. It was thirteen, seat thirteen, which is William Jones, and seat three.
Madam Attorney, you got the names for the positions, so we can call them out.
Yes.
All right, you will help me call out the first one.
On page 92 of your package, if you want to follow along, Ms. Noel Velcom is occupying seat fifteen, was appointed to the Vidant Medical Center board in March 2007 to fill the unexpired term of service. So, that's the first seat, if you want to address that one. Do you want to address them one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I think we need to.
Okay.
We should probably point out, too, the seat numbers don't correspond, obviously, with the district numbers of the board of commissioners.
Well, Mary hasn't offered anyone on the number one on her, has she?
Not that I have.
All right, anybody?
Well, if, this doesn't say that we have to have a seat, a doctor. It doesn't say that.
On page 92, the last sentence says, as you recalled, articles require that seat number eight be filled by a physician.
Physician.
Who is a resident Pitt County member, active member of the medical staff at Vidant Medical Center.
Okay, well, then, Tom Asbury for seat fifteen.
That it, Mary?
And Ernest Lee for seat sixteen.
All right, let's vote on the first one. All in favor of Ms. Ward's motion for, first one on your list, the doctor. Am I proper in doing this?
Yes, so, the way we've done it in the past pursuant to your rules is if you'll go by seat and vote in reverse order from the last nomination made. So, for seat fifteen, Ms. Ward has nominated Ms. Diane Taylor- So for seat fifteen, Ms. Ward has nominated Ms. Diane Taylor, and Ms. Perkins Williams has nominated Tom Asbell. So you would vote for Tom Asbell first.
You were telling me you want me to go from bottom up?
Correct. Yes.
All right, tell me the two names for the bottom one, Madam Attorney.
Tom Asbell, as nominated by Ms. Perkins Williams, and Diane Taylor, as nominated by Ms. Ward.
All right.
Vote Asbury first.
All right. All, Taylor's the one we're voting on, right?
So you are now voting on Tom, Tom Asbell.
I think you. Tom Asbell first, then Taylor.
All right, read his name out, Madam Attorney.
Tom Asbell for seat fifteen.
All in favor of that nominee, raise your right hand. All right, you got that?
Yes.
Who's the next one on that?
Diane Taylor for seat fifteen.
All right, all in favor of Taylor, raise your right hand.
Ms. Taylor.
All right, you got that?
Is granted that seat, yes. And then for seat sixteen, if I'm understanding correctly, if you voted in reverse order, the first one to consider would be Ernest Lee, the second one to consider would be William Monk.
All right, all in favor of the first one, raise your right hand. All right, you got that count?
Yes.
All in favor of Mr. Monk, raise your right hand.
And Mr. Monk will take that seat.
All right, now, need to vote for the one at the top?
Yes, on seat eight, you only have one nomination, and that's for Dr. Aman Tawari.
All in favor of that candidate, raise your right hand. So ordered, anything else on that?
No.
All right, appointment to the Pitt County Planning Board? Most pleasure.
Mr. Two?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Don Brown.
All right, any other nominations? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so ordered. Pitt County Board of Adjustments?
I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment, I haven't gotten to my page yet. Who is it?
Rex Fleming.
Yes, Rex Fleming, please.
Any others? Not all in favor of that candidate, raise your right hand, so ordered. Okay, O-Site Committee for EMS.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Joe Morgan.
Any others? Not all in favor of that nominee, raise your right hand, so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, you also have?
Can we have a reappointment?
Yeah, reappointments on the same committee for Dr. Patel, Kip Clemmons, Jim McArthur, George Pell, Jack Cody, and Gary Whitehurst.
I move for those reappointments.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, so ordered. Okay, what else you got, Mr. Mann?
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's start with Commissioners' comments, Melvin?
No comment.
Tom, Beth?
No comment.
Mary?
I still would like to see this board consider following our policy of making the districts a bit more involved throughout this county. We're always left out in District Two, and I'm not at all pleased that, that happens. Our district need to be represented on other boards rather than just one, rather than five, six, and four other boards and their same people. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mary.
I just want to say, thank you for your service, and we're going to miss Audrey.
Glenn?
Just the same, fifty years ago, when you were elected, my parents were in the fourth grade, and, so you've had a, had a long tenure of service, but, but I've learned a lot from you. It's been a pleasure to be your vice chairman twice. I've watched you closely, and I, I think a lot of both of you, and your examples to me, and I think to the citizens of this county, will last far beyond the adjournment of this meeting, and I thank you for your service and your dedication to the people of this county, because I don't think people understand how much time each of you put into that. And, and I just, I have a lot of respect for both of you, so thanks for being my friend, my oldest two friends, and, and tolerating me, because I remember the first thing you said to me is that you are old in body but young in mind, and I still think that holds true today, so thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Jimmy?
It has been an honor and a privilege.
That it?
That's it.
I think everybody's ready to go home, but.
Yep, saw a move that we.
No, you wait a minute, Mary, you're getting to the next. You know, sometimes you practice law, you, you tell the judge that I've got a jury argument built up, and sometimes he has sympathy for you and lets you say what your jury argument is. I've got a few words if I may.
Oh, yes.
My vision of life has always been based on what my mother and father taught me. They always said that if you do what's right and able to sleep at night, then you must have made the right decision. They also said that it's more blessed to give than it is to receive. My life personifies that to me. I've been more blessed with what I have received than what I have given. I hope that somewhere along the way, by error or mistake, I've been able to contribute a little. But having said that, I also got another vision in life that I often use. I don't know where that contributes to the fifty years or not, Glenn, but I never have really looked favor on the sunset. The sunrise, I always gleam with that, with joy and anticipation, with the idea that maybe you can have something innovative that's going to help other people. And that's been the story of my service that I've had. I want to give to other people, and I respect the other person's opinion, I respect the endurance that we all have, but with the idea of it's better to give than it is to receive, and it is better to look to the yonder for hope than you day the sunshine, and that's been my endeavor. With that having been said, with the permission of this board, I stand adjourned.